Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum. Everyone's present. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Any second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have special recognition on our agenda this evening, and at this time, I'm going to ask our Director of Community Planning and Development, Leonard Bauer, to explain the context for this proclamation today.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's a real pleasure to be here today. This is a great story of partnership, and it really began with our comprehensive plan in 2014, which really laid out a vision of having neighborhood centers, places for gathering and activities and services in every neighborhood that are easy to get to for people who live in that neighborhood. Following that, or excuse me, that plan also outlined a subarea planning process that our first neighborhood to take that up was the Northeast Neighborhoods, actually a coalition of five neighborhood associations to put that plan together. And through that plan and working with their residents, they actually identified the top priority among their five neighborhood associations, which was to improve the neighborhood center at San Francisco and Bethel Streets. And tonight, we're here to celebrate and recognize a lot of work by several people to make great progress in that direction. So I want to point out and introduce Mike Dexel here from the Northeast Neighborhood Association Board, and Yu Kim, who is the property owner, one of the property owners with her partner of the property at 1400 Bethel, which most of us have known as an old garage or gas station that has been sitting for decades, empty and derelict, and that building is no more. That has been demolished. The neighborhood association has applied for and received from the city a grant to landscape and provide seating in that area, and the plan on the Kim's part is to put food trucks there and have that be a gathering place. So if I could invite Mike to come on up, if you have anything, any comments you might want to make, he probably more than anyone is responsible for this happening as the, I'd call it, say a bulldog almost, in terms of making, being persistent in making this happen, and so give Mike an opportunity to say a few words.
Yeah, thanks, Leonard. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. It's been a long time working on this project. I was the president of the Northeast Neighborhood, oh gosh, 20 years ago it seems like now, for about five years. When I was there, I wanted to kind of bring the rest of the neighborhoods together, just talk about what are our priorities for that area? And wouldn't you know, the gas station was one of the big things that came up. And then soon after that, Leonard mentioned the city chose us to pilot the first subarea. And we talked about all the different priorities we might have. This was one of the big ones. And I just kind of said, I'll take this one on. We'll see how it pans out. It's been many years of community engagement. We did surveys. I mean, I could talk about this for the next half an hour probably, but kind of a man of a few words, so I'll just say, we had a great time working with the community, with the city. We had this subarea plan. We always wondered if it was actually going to really make a difference, right? We were already recognized neighborhood association, but having that subarea plan, we really hoped that it was going to make a difference in our community and be able to achieve a lot of the goals that we had set out to do. And I feel like this is one that we were able to do. We were lucky enough to work not just with Leonard's team, but Mike Reed and others to get to this point. And of course, the Kims. The Kims dug deep in their pockets to do the demolition of that gas station, and now we have an opportunity to create that community space. It's very exciting for our community. When the bulldozer showed up that day, lots of people were, in fact, that's about the time that Roosevelt Elementary was coming in for the morning, and a lot of people were excited to see what was going on. So what happens next? We're going to be putting in some seating and matching some of the landscaping that you see actually at the bakery near there. We're working with the landscape architect that actually helped the bakery do some of that stuff. So that should happen later this summer. We'll see what happens after that. The Kims are bringing in their truck, I think, here pretty soon. I think power went in today, so that's exciting too. And other than that, glad to be here and nice to have a success story because you kind of hold your breath for all these years hoping something's going to happen, and finally it did. So appreciate this opportunity, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dexel, and unto the property owners, Yu and Jung Kim, thank you for removing the blighted service station. And now I'm going to have, or did anyone have any questions? Sure, Councilmember Parshley.
Just because I can't help myself, and I've been seeing examples in small towns around Washington where small communities that were actually depressed putting in a few EV charging stations. They're finding people are getting out of their car and partaking in the businesses around there in the community. Have you thought of maybe putting one or two in that space?
I, well, I don't have the resources to do that kind of a thing. If that's something that the Kims want to pursue, would certainly encourage that. The parking's always been kind of interesting at that location. We'll kind of see how that pans out with the food trucks coming in, but I think that'd be great. Those kinds of things are much supported in our community, so I could see that as definitely being a possibility.
I think all of our community centers that we've planned, should probably put a few in. Forks is the big, one of the big examples, if you want to go look at what a small community that was economically struggling, what happened when they started putting in free EV charging stations.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so I think at this point, we're going to, I'm going to have our mayor pro tem read a proclamation in honor of this momentous occasion, so thank you.
Proclamation. Whereas the City of Olympia Comprehensive Plan designates 17 neighborhood centers to provide services and gathering places in every neighborhood, and whereas neighborhood centers are an important part of Olympia's community-wide goals to increase walkability, reduce carbon footprints, improve human health, and foster neighborhood connections and resiliency, and whereas the area surrounding the intersection of San Francisco and Bethel Street is one of the city's most active neighborhood centers, and whereas in 2016, the Olympia Northeast Neighborhoods Alliance, ONA, a coalition of five neighborhood associations, completed the Olympia Northeast Neighborhoods Subarea Plan in partnership with the City of Olympia, and whereas in that subarea plan, the residents of Northeast Olympia identified priorities for improvements in their neighborhoods, ranking improvement of the site of a former service station in the heart of the neighborhood center as their top priority, and whereas city staff and neighborhood leaders have continued to collaborate with the former and current property owners towards removal of the dilapidated service station and rehabilitation of the site, and whereas the site has been a successful recipient of EPA Brownfield Grant funding that has been used to assess and better understand the needs of long-term environmental remediation on site. And, we're getting to the good part. And whereas the property owners, Yu and Jung Kim, contracted to demolish the service station on April 26th, 2023, and are pursuing food carts to be located on the site, and whereas the Northeast Neighborhood Association has received a neighborhood matching grant from the city to provide landscaping and seating, and whereas the efforts of the city, ONA, and the property owner have begun to realize the vision of the Olympia Comprehensive Plan and the ONA Subarea Plan for an enhanced neighborhood center. Now, therefore, be it resolved to recognize the vision and action of the Olympia Northeast Neighborhoods Alliance, and particularly Northeast Neighborhood Association Board Member Mike Dexel, and property owners Yu and Jung Kim, for removing the blighted service station and enhancing the neighborhood center at San Francisco and Bethel Streets. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this sixth day of June, 18th day of June, we'll call it, for the Olympia, oh, July, it was not, we didn't get to it on the 6th of June, so we're going to do it on the 18th of July. Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
Next time, I'm going to have you sing it. Yeah, we had a little, we had a postpones from an earlier council meeting, that's why the date didn't get changed, but anyhow, thank you again so much. So we're going to move on to public comment this evening. We didn't have anybody sign up for virtual public comment. We have one person in chambers. So public comment is a time for our community to address the council on items of either city business or items that are on tonight's agenda. So you have two minutes. There's a countdown clock over my right shoulder, and you can come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and tell us what you're thinking. I have Bernie Meyer.
I am Bernie Meyer. My home is at 402 Patterson Street Northeast. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank your staff also for securing clearing out of the holding pond of overgrowth adjoining my yard last week. My purpose here is to request the city to wake up and develop operational policies to allow nature its rightful place. During July 4th and 5th and 6th, the hottest recorded world average temperature ever recorded, I walked on Athan Patterson North Street, Patterson Street Northeast, where 5.47 acres had just been totally cleared of all natural growth for new so-called development. Not even the grand old maple tree on the corner was left standing as a gesture to nature. Talking to a young neighbor, she said that northern Arizona, where she came from, they could not do that. Later, as I walked to the food co-op on Patterson, I passed Inter-City Transit's new building.
Keep going.
They were just clearing out the last mature trees for more development. More new development is happening on Martin Way in Patterson for housing the homeless with the leadership of the city. Again, I am requesting you to wake up and create new policies for life. Yesterday, Democracy Now! had a segment with Jeff Goodell, who wrote, "The Heat Will Kill Us First: Life and Death on a Scorched Planet." The book also includes what to do there.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. We've run out of our time for public comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, what we also ask people to do is to email those comments to us. We all have emails, and so you can email what you had written down, and then we'll be able to read the whole thing. So I hope you'll do that for us.
Want this?
You can leave it with one of my councilmates, or our Assistant City Manager, Rich Hoy.
Jim's got it.
We'll make copies to everyone so that you can finish your statement.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Parshley.
Thank you for coming. It always takes a brave person to stand up at the podium. With your voice, what you just said, we are going through a comprehensive plan update, and we're looking for community input. You should think about that. You go onto our website, and I think there's, Engage Olympia has some. I'm looking at my two councilmates who are spending more effort on that, but we need community input, because without community input, we can't do an effective update. Because honestly, we're going to be in a problem, because the best thing a city can do, according to ICLI, which is an international climate change thing, is densify, which means some of our land's going to get cleared, so we can densify. But we have to put in that green spaces, so we reduce the heat in our cities. But this is the absolute best thing a city can do. But thank you very much for coming.
Anyone else? Councilmember Wayne.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. I believe when you signed up for public comment tonight, we've gotten your email. So in addition to you providing possibly more comment for us in the future, I do want to recognize that you did just provide comment, and so I'll be asking staff to follow up with you. Oh, it looks like they're approaching you right now, to tell you about all of the things that we are currently doing. It is, we're all feeling the heat in more ways than one, and I do really appreciate you coming to public comment, and there are certainly efforts, and sometimes we don't do the best job of sort of connecting the community to what those efforts are. So as we continue working on them, I would love for you to know what we are currently doing. Thanks.
All right. We're going to move on now to our adoption of the consent calendar. I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls this evening? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is adopted. That takes us right to other businesses this evening. We have two items. The first one is a legislative update, and I'm going to invite forward our Executive Assistant to the City Manager, Susan Grisham, and Deborah Mongia will be joining her, who is our lobbyist with Capital Consulting. Welcome, Susan and Deborah.
Good evening, councilmembers. For the record, I'm Susan Grisham, Assistant to the City Manager and the city's legislative liaison. Tonight, we are going to get an overview of the 2023 legislative session that was, talk a little bit about the 2123 budgets, get an update on how our city fared this past session with our priorities, along with some additional areas of interest, and we'll take a look ahead at next year and next steps, and also maybe touch on what we want to see for next session, what our priority, what you guys are thinking about for your priorities, and just get an early preview of your thoughts. And with that, I will turn it over to Deborah Mongia, our contract lobbyist, to go through some of the agenda.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. It's nice to see everyone. And before I begin, I just also wanted to express my gratitude for not only all of the work that all of you did during legislative session, but your incredible staff. You have amazing staff in the city, and they're great to work with. And so with that, I am going to jump forward and just do a real quick overview of the session that we just had. It was a long session. It was 105 days. It started January 9th. It ended April 23rd, and then they had a one-day special session on May 16th in order to address the Blake decision and how the state was going to handle that. This was the long session where they adopt their biennial budgets, the operating budget, the capital budget, and the transportation budget, and they did a lot of other stuff, too. The Democrats retained their strong majorities in both the House and the Senate, and there was a lot of focus this session on housing, on behavioral health needs, on workforce and climate. So we're going to cover some of that. They adopted a $69.3 billion operating budget, and they kept $3 billion of that in reserves, and so that'll be good. The revenue forecast that had been coming in last month, it was down. This month, it's up a little bit, but it's, there's still a lot of concern about where the revenue is going to be at the operating level within the state with uncertainty of everything that's happening all over the place. But they had huge investments in behavioral health, but more investments are needed, so we'll talk about that in a little bit. Public schools, of course, affordable housing, they had, combined with the capital budget, they exceeded over $1 billion that they put into affordable housing, which is something that's unprecedented for Washington State. And then also, for the first time, the legislature had revenues from the New Climate Commitment Act that they were able to put into all three budgets. And they really focused on supporting overburdened communities, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, clean energy, and salmon recovery. They also, just more city-specific kinds of things, they one time increased the BLEA classes, the Basic Law Enforcement Academy classes, from 20 to 23, so that was good. They put 11 and a half million into the LEED program, the Law Enforcement Assistance Diversion. They have continued funding for Blake cases, so they really did a lot in the operating budget. And then on the capital budget, it was a $9 billion capital budget, and they reserved 95.4 million in bond capacity for the supplemental. So what that means is there's not going to be a whole lot of money in the supplemental for capital needs, so we'll need to keep that in mind. But they put a tremendous amount of money into the Housing Trust Fund and other housing investments, in community-based behavioral facilities, a new 350-bed forensic hospital at Western State. They put $400 million into the Public Works Assistance Account, and they sunsetted the diversions, and so that's really good news for local governments. They put $25 million into the Community Economic Revitalization Board, and then they put a lot of money, almost 424 million, into clean energy, energy efficiency, and climate adaptation. They put money in for broadband and for local culverts and things like that, too, in the capital budget. And then in the transportation budget, if you'll remember, last session, they passed a Move Ahead package, which was a 16-year, $16 billion transportation package, but they didn't phase out any of the projects, meaning they didn't say how much money each project would get in various bienniums. And so they did that this session, but they only went out to 2029. The last biennium that they put money in was 2729, and everything else went into a future category, including the money that Olympia got for the 101 interchange. The good news is, it's still in the budget, and I worked with your staff, and they said, we don't need it before 2029. But you may have heard some of the communication that has gone on between the governor and the Secretary Millar, the DOT Transportation Secretary, and they really criticized the legislature for not putting more priority into maintenance and preservation, and they really feel that the legislature overpromised on new projects, and they think that there's going to have to be continued discussions on that. So I guess that's my way of saying, we need to make sure that we keep talking with our legislators about the 101 project and that that doesn't get lost as they continue to try and fund the Connecting Washington projects and the new Move Ahead projects. But they did, they did put money into preservation and maintenance. They put over $1 billion into the state's fish passage barriers in order to meet the lawsuit. They put a lot of money into traffic safety. One of the things with the transportation budget, though, is that revenues continue to decline, that the tax revenues continue to decline. There is money that comes from the Climate Commitment Act that goes into transportation, so that's good, and that fund source, as of right now, is in good shape, depends on if the legislature decides they want to make any changes based on the conversations right now around gas prices. But that revenue source seems to be good, but the legislature has been looking at the possibility of down the road doing a road usage charge, and they also put a proviso in the transportation budget to do a study, to take a look at a statewide retail delivery fee. Another state, I think it's Colorado, but I'm not sure, they put a few pennies on each transaction that had to do with like an Amazon purchase where they would drive to and deliver a package, and then that money would go to the state and to local governments in order to help with maintenance and preservation of the roads. So that's something that we'll be, we'll be taking a look at, too. In terms of city-specific priorities, one of them was the funding for the Deshude Estuary, and there was $7 million that was put into the operating budget for that. And so in talking with DES, that gets them through the next biennium, and we'll have to continue partnering with them for additional funding that we're going to need in the future. The city had the Yelm Highway Park and the Kaiser Woods, and both of those were funded at the requested amount, and then the $1 million for the armory through the Heritage Capital Grant Program. Another thing that the city took some interest in and helped lobby for was Senate Bill 5001, which would allow a jurisdiction that had already entered into a public facility district to enter into a second public facility district with some of the same partners, didn't have to be all of them, but some of the same, in order to do a regional aquatic and/or sports facility. And so that did pass. And then, of course, the property tax levy lift has been a long-term priority for the city, and that did not pass. So they told us that they save those kinds of things to the very end, and at the very end, it just sort of went poof. So we'll have to see. The bill, all the bills that didn't pass in this last session will automatically be reintroduced. Whether or not they will move, we will see, but that continues to be a strong priority. Additional areas, housing, as I said, was a big, big issue. Representative Bateman's middle housing bill did pass, and I have to give her a lot of credit. She did an incredible job working on this with stakeholders and her colleagues to get that passed. There were some ADU bills that passed, some design review bills that passed, a lot of housing bills that passed, some that didn't pass that will be back next session, transit-oriented development. So there's still some questions about how that would affect cities and how bus rapid transit would be defined, and the FAR, the floor-area ratio, was the metric that they used in that bill, so in a lot of cities, that's like Latin to them, so they don't know. So there's going to be, there's going to be continued discussions on that, and Representative Barkus had a lot-splitting bill. That will be back next session as well, so your staff have been engaged in that and had some good suggestions for clarification on that bill, so we'll keep working on that. On the Blake response, that, of course, did pass during the special session, and so I know that there will continue to be a lot of interest in how that gets implemented and the funding that goes into that, and so I believe that that'll be something that the legislature continues to talk about next session. Public safety is another area that they really delved into this last session. They had some firearm bills, they had an assault weapons ban, they did a bill on vehicular pursuits, they put new parameters around victims of domestic violence and dealing with those cases. They expanded the definition of street racing, so that there was, there was a strong focus on public safety as well. There also were climate bills that were enacted. One of the big one is House Bill 1181. It adds a climate and resiliency goal into the Growth Management Act, and so I'm sure your staff are very engaged in that as well, and as are you. And then I know that Olympia already did this, but they did pass a cultural access tax bill, House Bill 1575, which would allow a county, and if the county doesn't do it in the city, councilmanically to impose that in order to support those efforts. So looking ahead and next steps, there's going to be some changes in the '24 legislature. Senator Rolfes is stepping down from the legislature after being there for, I think, like 16 years. She's been the Chair of Senate Ways and Means, and she was appointed to Kitsap County Board of Commissioners, and so she's going to be leaving her seat. And then in terms of some other leaders, Representative Wilcox and Representative Kreutz, who were the House Minority Leader and Assistant Leader, have stepped down from those leadership positions. So there's already going to be some changing of different positions, and then, of course, 2024 is a big election year. Half the Senate and all of the House and all of the statewide positions, and so there's going to be a lot of, a lot of moving chairs in terms of what's going to be happening with the legislature. And so I think with that, we can probably talk about the development of the 2024 legislative agenda, and Susan, turn it back over to you.
Well, maybe if there's any questions about this past session.
Any questions for Deborah? I just had, Councilmember Parshley?
I had a bunch, but I'm going to save some of those for staff. The main one I had is on the sales tax, the home fund type of sales tax, being allowed to do rent relief in the county mental health and dependency. I know we only have 35% of our home fund left, but is that going to be something that we could use in our 35%? The rent relief, is that what that law is about?
I will, I'll have to follow up with you on that, to make sure that I'm tracking which, do you have a bill number?
It is Senate Bill 5604.
Okay. I'll follow up with you. Okay, I'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, because that would, you know, that'd be awesome if we could take some of that money, at least when we're having conversations. The only other one that I was interested in is the Blake Compromise. From my understanding, and I just make sure I'm right on this, it's a gross misdemeanor when using in public, but there was supposed to be a strong language that would require diversion when possible. Is that still in there?
There is, there is a lot of language in there about diversion, but it makes it more flexible. It gives more flexibility to local governments in terms of subsequent diversions. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but there, that was part of what passed.
Okay, I guess I have one more. The bicycle and people or pedestrian impact fee, that's not a new one. That is what we could use our current ones for?
Again, I will have to follow up with you on that.
Senate Bill 5452.
Is that's the transportation bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that a lawsuit was just filed on that bill as well, claiming that there were multiple issues within that that they felt was unconstitutional. I think Lane Powell is the, is the law firm that's, that brought that forward, so we'll have to see what happens. They had fees in there, increases in fees, plus some other things, some policy things that they did.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvie. One, just one item, because Councilmember Partially asked around Blake, it's just to make sure we're monitoring it, because I've heard that some jurisdictions, in fact locally, I'm not sure about Olympia, but in our county, have interpreted that they no longer need to use diversion programs and that they can, that there isn't a place in that law that's asking them to book people first, rather than law enforcement assisted diversion before you take them to the jail. And so I'd like to learn about and make sure that we're following that, to make sure that all of those diversion programs that are being funded are mandatory first.
I am happy to get you the language that's in the bill. My understanding of it, though, is that it gives more prosecutorial discretion to, to the courts, particularly if you, if there are instances where someone has been to diversion before and it wasn't working. I mean, I think it depends on, on the circumstances.
Good, that makes sense. Thank you.
I've got Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protim Gilman, followed by Councilmember Madron.
So I'm going to jump on the mental health services bandwagon here, and I, I couldn't find the bill or the new program around the community-based behavioral health facilities. And so maybe just as part of this follow-up, clarifying whether that's additional funding into the program that Commerce has been granting to private mental health hospitals for a number of years, or if this is something else.
There, so there's behavioral health funding in both the operating and the capital budget, and I know some of it has gone into existing programs, but that, they may have created some new programs. Commerce...
And it's the facilities specific piece that was on your, your...
I will, I will go through the capital budget, because that would have come, come out of the capital budget, to see if it created a new program or if it was just increasing funding to an existing program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Madron, and then, and then Councilmember Payne.
Well, one thing that this council's had on our legislative agenda for a few years, longer than I've been on, and we recently updated, the language on it is around rent stabilization. And that's something that we continuously hear from our constituents, asking us to act on that when we're not allowed to by the state. And I'm curious, you know, what, was there any progress made on this issue? And what are the, the hangups around it? I know, I know that there wasn't a bill that passed, but I'm not sure what was introduced, how far it went, and what the challenges are.
There were several bills that were introduced around rent stabilization and keeping people in their homes. There was a bill that did pass that increased the amount of time that a landlord had to give a tenant if they were increasing their rent by a certain percentage. I don't have the details right off the top of my head, but I can, I can send you a summary of the bills that passed and the ones that did not pass.
Yeah, and I'm specifically speaking about the, the ability to increase rent when I speak about rent stabilization. Was, was there a state-wide, statewide stabilization bill that was introduced?
There might have been one that was introduced. I know that that would have been very, very controversial, and I, I'm sure nothing like that passed, but I'm happy to do a little bit more research and share with you maybe some of the comments that were made during public comment on that, too.
Yeah, I'd be very curious to hear about that, just because, you know, we, it's something that we've said that we'd like to see, and like I said, we, like, at least a couple of times a month, I think we hear from constituents on how much their rent is going up, and just being able to share with them, you know, what our challenges are as a city and what we're hearing from the state would be really helpful.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Payne.
Hi, Deborah. Thank you so much for your work this session. I was curious about Second Substitute Senate Bill 5120, which is about 23, 23-hour crisis relief centers. So essentially, it's a bill that requires the State Department of Health to license 23-hour crisis relief centers, and I was just curious about that process. Do they take municipal referrals, or how exactly does that work? Do you have any insight into that?
My understanding is they needed a statutory change, I believe, in order to access Medicaid dollars, and so that's why that bill was introduced. I do know that there was a group of cities in King County that were working together through a provider, but my, I believe that it's not, it's not a municipal facility, but the cities are involved with that facility, and they were very involved in selecting who was going to run the facility and that kind of thing. And I know King County was very much involved in that. But, and that's, that's pretty much tapping my memory bank on that one, but I'll follow up with you and I'll, and I'll let you know.
Okay, yes, thank you. And my other inquiry was about the Blake decision, and this is actually more so, Chief, I see you standing in the back. I was just curious about, you know, where are we in terms of understanding how we're going to implement this law for the city?
Yeah, I was noticing Chief Allen in the back standing up, because I think, I think he's got some answers for us.
Hi, thank you for the record, Rich Allen, Police Chief, and hopefully I can answer it and not make it confusing, and if I get it wrong, I'm sure Mr. Barber will start yelling at me. But the most recent legislation repealed the portion of the law that required two referrals prior to arrest. If I understand it correctly, the new law has the wording that the courts, the prosecutors are strongly encouraged to do some kind of deferral or diversion. Obviously, that's post-arrest, though. Here in Olympia, we're not going to place an emphasis on arresting on these new charges. We're not going to make it a priority. It's going to be simply another law on the books for our officers to use. They will always have discretion, like they have in the past. We'll always have the ability to point people in the right direction and to informally hook people up with service providers. One of the good things about our community court is that it has assembled a great group of service providers, local providers, and someone doesn't have to have a pending criminal charge to be tapped into those resources. So our walking patrol is very good at that. My gut tells me that the majority of these cases will be in our downtown environment. We've always operated through the lens of, you know, moving people towards wellness in, in how we enforce the law down there. We start with compassion, and if that doesn't work, then we move to accountability, and this law will certainly be no different. But if I understand it correctly, they did repeal that portion of the law that talks about the two referrals.
Follow up with, sorry. Are you finished, Councilmember Payne?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll follow up with the Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvie, and thanks, Chief. I, I'm curious if, because we have the pleasure and opportunity of having other agencies work in our city sometimes, and I'm curious have the, has the sheriff and the State Patrol interpreted it the same way you have, and do their officers have the same direction to keep people out of jail first?
I don't know if that's specifically the direction. I do know that we've all talked about it, and any formal diversion is going to come really prosecutor-driven, formal diversion.
So that means you have to be booked to get into the system.
You would have to be, at least have a charge referred, you know, not necessarily taken to jail. There's many, many ways to hold people accountable.
Got it.
Right, but we can, one of the ways is write up a police report and simply send that to the prosecutor, and then the prosecutor can refer, I'm sorry, review, and if they decide to file charges, then they have deferral options available to them.
Thank you, that's really helpful, I appreciate it.
All right, and I think I have Councilmember Partially with one more.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to ask this. With the amount of money they put aside, the state legislature for climate, the 400 million and change, who's going to distribute that? Is Commerce, or?
It would, it'll go to various agencies. The Commerce, I'm sure, will get some, the Recreation and Conservation Office, Department of Natural Resources, there's, it was dispersed amongst a lot of different agencies. If you're interested in seeing the list, I can get that to you.
Thank you. More importantly, probably Pamela Braff, she probably already has it, though, our climate program manager.
All right, are we good up and down the dais? All right, thank you so much, and we have some more to get through, I'm sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to, while I had you here, just touch base with you and see what your hopes and dreams are for the 2024 legislative agenda for the city. Just, you know, I know many of the items like climate and housing and mental health and behavioral resources in our property tax levy lift, those are things that will probably roll over, but if there's anything new, just while we have you here, that's on your mind, that we might want to add next year, just to get an early start, I'd be happy to hear any thoughts you have.
Right. Mayor Protim Gilman.
So along with the continuing to support rent control, as Councilmember Madron suggested, I think, parallel to that, there was House Bill 1045, this last session was a request for a two-year pilot guaranteed basic income for households below 200% of the median income. And I would be very interested in our combining that sort of, support for that, that kind of support alongside of the rent stabilization efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tag on to that. I think any, you know, that policy has a foundation for a conversation around financial stability. If you look at what the work that we did around Olympia's strong, you know, people are struggling way more so than the state is talking about. And so trying to shine a light on that and maybe get the pilot or maybe have some other tools, particularly around rent, food, the cost of food and the cost of childcare, I think those are the three biggest things that were, the city might have space or the community might have space to talk about. And then the other big one for me is, and I think this is kind of tied to the 1%, but it's a separate issue, I'm really disturbed that we have good mechanisms for funding parks and roads, and we don't have a good mechanism for funding EMS and fire departments. And so it'd be really great if the legislature could look at, you know, what are the first priority core services for a city and, you know, that you're always going to need to have, and, and provide funding opportunities for, for that. And, and the reason I say it's tied to the, the 1% is because every, you know, pension increase or healthcare increase reduces our, our ability to serve, and when we can't even adjust for cost of living, there, to me, there's a through-line connection to not having specified and dedicated funding sources for things, plus all the other really important things that everybody else is going to talk about.
Councilmember Partially.
I'm going to say yes and, the 1%, you know, if it's at the top, I'd be happy. And maybe I'm wrong, but I saw in there the bill that had climate be considered part of our comprehensive plan updates. I would love to see diversity, equity, social justice be a requirement. I'd also like us to have the state begin to have the conversation about allowing jurisdictions that are very close in proximity, jurisdictional lines being on top of each other, being able to form combined public safety departments such as fire, without having to go to the voters if it's just simply for property tax. Because that, because we're doing it for the Aquatic Center, we do it for other facilities, lot, et cetera. It would be nice to do that and separate away from the FBC.
All right, about Councilmember Payne.
So I'm thinking about our conversation that we had in Community Livability and Public Safety Committee just last month around our downtown ambassadors in the Crisis Response Unit. And even though we've just expanded it, we've had conversations about whether we need some type of crisis response, walking patrol. And so it would be great to see the state have some designated funds towards helping local governments who have these type of programs be able to expand them. With that being said, I recognize that this is a supplemental budget here, and that's probably unlikely, but it doesn't hurt to start the conversation now. And I kind of just want to put that out there, that I am managing my expectations for this year, but, yes, we need it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, Councilmember Partially mentioned that the property tax levy lift, and if that could be at the top, we, we had talked about having it at the top in this, in this last agenda, it's like, well, is there actually going to be a real effort at the legislature? And if not, like, you know, the Deshude Estuary is a really high priority. Well, that got funded. And then we also saw the levy lift bill that actually made some progress, so I would actually support having that at the top of our agenda for this next, next session. And also, Susan, don't you have, like, a running list of all the things that we want to add to our legislative agenda throughout the year? Like, I know, I know you've got that in your back pocket somewhere.
I do pay attention to that, but you never know what, what is percolating.
All right, well, I'll, I'll add one, and I don't know, I'm just going to start to do some meetings with our LD22 group to find out if there is any path forward or energy around looking at a family's power to help a family member that's, you know, not a minor into psychiatric care. I know, I don't think mental health has touched every family in our community, and I've met with parents who have tried and tried and tried to get their family member help against their will, and sometimes it helps works and sometimes they end up not making it, so I'm very interested in that.
Councilmember Payne.
Yeah, I wonder if I might, Deborah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I wonder if, this sounds a lot like Ricky's Law to me, that Representative Lauren Davis passed years back. Now, I, I don't know all the specifics about Ricky's Law, but that is substance abuse. I'm not sure if you can do it for mental health also, but something to look into. I wonder if there is kind of something sometimes there that maybe we could add to, or something there that we don't know about and we could utilize. Thank you.
Yes, one was specific to mental health, it just seems like that's a tougher nut to crack. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yep, up and forward. 24. I'm excited. All right. Next, we're on to Item 6B, which is an update on our most recent acquisition, big old building called the Armory, 50,000 square feet of awesomeness, and very, very excited to welcome Valerie Roberts, who is our new Armory Building Manager. You work in the Olympia Parks and Recreation Department, that's where you live, but actually, I think you live in the Armory now, right, up in that tower?
I do, I do live there. Thank you, Mayor Sylvie and members of the council for the record. My name is Valerie Roberts, I am the new Armory Building Manager, I started in April. I am very excited to meet you all, thank you so much for having me today. Today, my job is to just provide you with an update of where we are, I'm going to do my best. I started in April, so I'm going to share with you what I know, what we're excited to have accomplished so far, and also what we're excited to be working towards over this next year. This is the beautiful Armory Creative Campus, 50,000 square... over this next year. This is the beautiful Armory Creative Campus, fifty thousand square feet, built in nineteen thirty-nine. Um the city of Olympia is very lucky to be able to be working towards turning this into a creative art campus. Um so this is my agenda. We're just gonna do a general status update of what's, work has been done by the amazing arts team uh that I've been lucky to join. And then I'll go into detail on some next steps. It's gonna be two chunks, phase one, design and construction, and then we're gonna talk about our partner search with our contractor, a hundred and ten percent. And there's some more details in between all of those. So where are we? Uh in twenty twenty-three, we're very excited to have our concept plan in place. This was done in partnership with Framework Cultural Place Making. Um through many surveys, interviews, focus groups with over five thousand participants, the community was engaged to create a dream vision of what a creative campus would look like at the Armory. This is going to be one of our guiding documents that's going to help inform how we can move the Armory from uh its current existence into an art center. Uh this concept plan was awarded, um was given an award for its engagement in the community through community involvement through the American Planning Association, Planning Association of Washington this year. So that's a very big, wonderful, congratulations to the team that worked on that. Uh we were also awarded a national endowment for the arts grants for artist interventions. Um this is the Art Town Grant, seventy-five thousand dollars. And I will go into the arts interventions in a couple of slides. They're happening right now. And we're very excited to use them to help to inform our design process. We were also awarded the one million dollar Capital Heritage Grant, which we were very excited to be able to use to help fund phase one development at the Armory. And I was hired. Um I'm a brand new physician with the city. And I'm really excited to be here. I'm coming from a long career in working for national and state parks as well as museums, uh mostly natural and cultural history museums, where I ran uh visitor engagement, front of house, how people experience buildings and creating accessible and welcoming environments. So I'm excited to be joining the team. Uh okay, so that's where we're at. We're doing really good. Next steps. So phase one, design and construction. We now have our dream vision, the concept plan, and we need to move forward with our community, with the arts organizations in town, with everyone, to move forward one step towards reaching that dream vision. We are going to be engaging artists through these art interventions to pilot test the space and inform design through art creation. We're going to be joining the Department of Enterprise Services Energy Savings Program. We're gonna be working with them to sign an energy ser- uh energy savings company to help us do for phase one design and construction. I'll go into a bit more detail about that. And we will be continuing to engage people in community meetings during phase one. The artist interventions, they're happening right now. Um they are going to engage artists, cultural bearers, uh and a youth action council to imagine uses of the space through temporary art installations and creative pop-up projects to inform facility design. Example of this, this portion of our building right here, that's our annex. That's a separate building behind us. And you can see, it's a big empty shell most days, but over the last two weeks, the Thurston County Museum of Fine Art had transformed it into a fine art museum. Uh and they had a big party on Friday. It was very, very fun. There was a big dynamic light installation. Uh a lot of amazing things happening. Today and on Thursday, Janice Arnold is having a felt-making workshop, which this Saturday will be uh there will be a community stomp event out in the yard where people can come listen to music and dance on the felt piece to get it worked into a unique piece of art. And um those are just a couple of examples of nine different organizations that were able to award, be awarded grant funding and given access to the space to transform it. Uh one more that we're looking forward to seeing that hasn't happened yet is at the end of the month, uh Olympia Pride will be having a family-friendly pride event called Illuminate Pride here in the Armory, and it's gonna be on all levels. So I encourage you to come and visit if you can. Um the really cool thing about this is it's a really fun way for us to pilot test the space. So it's gonna give us a lot of really good answers. The Symphony did a Come As You Are performance. We learned a lot about sound in the building, right? Uh there's gonna be a lot of community feedback, a lot of art participation feedback that we can take to our contractor with the D E S Energy Savings Program to inform how are we shaping these spaces to be more useful, more engaging, more possible for artists to use. And with that, we have selected using the Energy Savings Program for phase one. Uh because of the phase one focus, it's in a really great alignment. Phase one is about designing with the community through these artist interventions and also through some community meetings, but it's mostly about accessibility and building improvements for safety. So a lot of what you'll see through the scope of phase one are HVAC, electrical and mechanical plumbing, seismic studies, securing the external part of the building so that it can be preserved and no moisture can get in, updating the windows, putting in an elevator, updating the bathrooms so that they're all ADA, looking at access for the whole building so that it can be safe and accessible while it's open. Um this is one step towards moving towards our dream vision, and it is an incredibly important step. Ninety percent of the work in phase one is perfectly aligned with the Energy Savings Program through D E S and the um Energy Savings Company or ESCO uh that we will select to work with. We will be benefiting from a suite of experts who look at energy savings, look at these types of installations and buildings to put in the best possible systems for us to be able to use them going forward. Yeah.
Valerie, just a point of order. Do you want to handle questions as you go, or would you rather you, we wait until the end?
Oh, that's a good question. Um I think I'm on a roll. Do you mind if I?
That's why I asked.
Roll through and then I'll, I'll take them all at the same time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for asking me.
You bet.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's so many words on this slide. There's a lot of benefits to going with the Energy Savings Program. Um we have additional contracting support, so there's an additional project manager from the state who will work with me and the Energy Savings Company to make sure that the work that we do is the best possible quality. Um there's performance price and energy savings guarantees. That means that the Energy Savings Company will do a major audit, and they will tell us what our projected energy savings for the course of thirty years would be. And then we can use that to leverage and benefit the possibilities of phase one. In addition to that, the price that they offer at the end of that audit is guaranteed regardless of inflation costs or any inflating materials for the project. We will pay that much, which is wonderful for this um project. Um there's a faster turnaround on timeline because we're working with Department of Enterprise Services and these energy savings companies that are very versed in these types of projects. They're gonna be able to hit the ground running and do these really, this amazing investment-grade audit for the building. They've worked with historic and older buildings before, so they really kind of know the questions to ask. They know what to look for, and we can, and they can start construction as they are also working through some of the refining points of the building. Um the majority of our work fits into phase one scope, and the financial support for the ESCO is a really great um additional part. The Energy Savings Companies will pursue federal grants, sponsors, and fundraising opportunities specific towards energy savings and making the building as efficient as possible. And that is a scope, a professional scope of grant writing that we can really take advantage of through this program. So that might allow us to get a little bit more distance for phase one and do more to make it more safe and accessible and have the building last a longer time um in these essential systems. There's also a possibility of leasing some energy systems within the offering, uh the Armory to offer upfront different upfront classes, kind of like leasing a copy or um, that's just an option. I'm not sure what the scope of that will look like. We're still kind of in the beginning phases of getting everybody uh at the table. Part of what we'll be doing with this Energy Savings Company is continuing to engage the community. Um we've had a number of um potential partner meetings, and those people who've in- uh had community interest and will be inviting anybody from the community to come who wants to talk about the four types of spaces that have been identified in the concept plan and what kind of nitty-gritty details you'd like to make sure that the Energy Savings Company wants to hear about can come and talk about. Uh actually, in art-making spaces, I need my outlets to be at least four feet high, right? Something like that. Uh so we're gonna have some really, really fun, informative meetings based on the types of spaces that we've identified that are needed in the Armory. And if I can, any members to come talk to the professional engineers who are gonna be working through the project to contribute specific things that the community thinks matters from walls in. I'm very interested to join this conversation, so it'll be very fun. Um I'm gonna pause here. That's kind of the chunk for phase one construction. I'm gonna be moving to the other body of work that I have right now, which is with our contractor, a hundred and ten percent. This is identifying anchor partners. So an anchor partner that we're defining for the Armory is somebody who's going to be taking on a long-term lease. There's gonna be many ways to engage in partnership at the Armory, but the first task is to identify the anchor partners.
All right, so we have time for a little pause for some questions. I've got a few, but I'm open to go with Mayor Pro Tim.
Thanks, Valerie. So I have a a couple. First, something I hadn't considered before with the arts interventions is that it's a way to physically test out the space for different kinds of uses. And and specifically, my experience with the Symphony Come As You Are was that while it was really difficult at the planning meetings for me to hear and even to be in the room with a hundred people talking, with the Symphony playing, it worked really well. And I I checked in with Dave Sederberg, Pacific Stage, who was just elated about the sound quality of a single performance while the audience is listening. So that was, I thought that was super encouraging. Um and I'm I'm a real fan of the energy services contract sort of model. And I I even think that the the leasing or or basically turning over the equipment, you know, we pay the equivalent of an of an electric bill or a power bill, and and they manage equipment and switches as they believe it's most efficient. I I think that's a super good model, so I'm I'm glad you're exploring that.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Parshley.
This question is probably for phase two, but I don't wanna make an assumption, 'cause you know what that old saying about assumptions is. Um with this group, are we looking down the line for our plans to include changes in the building to allow solar and such? And I'm working through that. Is that a yes, phase two, and I'm way ahead? Turn the pages ahead.
No, no, you're actually right on track. That's a good thing to note. Uh we are going to be including the question of solar as well as E V charging stations in the full-scale audit that the Energy Savings Company is going to do, something we're gonna ask for them to find the feasibility of. The actual implementation is probably a later phase, just like you said, but we're going to ask them to include it into the scope of the audit of is it possible for us to, is the roof possible? Can it hold that much, right? What does it look like? Is it possible for that to be a part of our energy savings scope? And if it is, then we'll definitely move forward with it. But if, we wanna make sure that it's part of the feasibility question at the very beginning, because this is when we're putting the energy infrastructure in. So even if it's not possible to put the panels up, we wanna make sure that the pant, the electrical can handle the load if we do add it later. Um so it is an essential part of the question we're gonna be asking D E S and the Energy Savings Company to explore.
Okay, uh just, just sort of a hanger-on to that, is in the future, looking for partners, is this the group that's gonna be looking for like P S E to do a showcase piece for the solar or even put in a battery that they put in into nine oh? Uh because that would affect what kind of um wiring you do, this this base level. Are you able to, are they able to talk about that kind of thing? 'Cause there are those partnerships out there that could influence what you do right now, that would make it very difficult in the future to do.
Yes, I believe, well, I, within the scope of what I know, I believe that the Energy Savings Companies would be working to identify partners, sponsors, opportunities that can get folded into the work that they do, but also influence the work that they do in order for those things to remain possible in the future.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh I'll move on with my questions. So Framework was who did the initial scoping of uses?
Yes.
So is that contract complete?
It is.
Okay.
Complete. Yes.
All right, so then this new contractor is a hundred and ten percent.
Yes.
I, you know, we just, I haven't heard about them. So how, what's their scope?
Uh I'm gonna actually be jumping right into it, um but there's.
Next part.
This next part, it kind of leads into, into talking about what they're going to do, but I'll do a little beginning summary, and then we can get there again.
Or actually, why don't you just, you can just, I'm, I'm content to wait. Yeah.
Anticipation, okay.
Yeah. So the, this D E S program.
Yes.
Is that something new for the state?
The D E S Energy Savings Program, I do not think is new. I don't know how old it is, though. I feel like there have been multiple projects that the city of Olympia has done. I know at least one other park staff member has told me that she has been a part of one, and I feel like the city staff have done multiple energy savings project, projects over time. I I don't know the the specifics.
Okay, 'cause I remember someone approaching me in the last year saying, oh, the D E S has this amazing program that, you know, so that's it. Okay, great. Oh, great. All right. Mark, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council for the record. I'm Mark Russell, and I'm Public Works Director. Um just to remind you, um we have used energy savings contracting before in our public works. We use them to upgrade our HVAC and mechanical systems in some of our facilities, and we also use that contracting method to transition all of our streetlights to L E D a few years back. So it's been a few years, though. I think it's been over the last ten years. It's gone by really quick, but we have used this contracting mechanism.
Wonderful. Is there a cost to us?
The.
Consulting from them?
Their costs are rolled into the improvements. Um they typically, um the savings that we see uh through the projects um pay for their services a lot of the time, so, or reduce costs with P S E and that type of thing.
Seems like a, a unique model for a state.
It is unique, and it's a great partnership.
Absolutely. And so this would be something that we could use in the future for one oh eight state.
I believe so.
It needs a big energy audit as well.
It's always an option.
That's good. Yeah. Um and then just kind of a silly question. When are you gonna paint it?
Thanks, Mark.
That's good.
That's a great question. Um I, well, part of the heritage grant that we received was securing the building envelope, so part of that's going to be treating the exterior of the building. So it'll look very nice on the outside. Inside painting, I'm not so sure uh to be determined. I know that uh any walls that are impacted because of the building's safety and accessibility upgrades will get a full finish.
Sure.
Um but I don't know how many of those walls will be that.
I'm thinking more the out, the exterior.
Oh, the exterior, yes. You'll see that in phase one.
Wonderful. And who gets to pick colors?
Uh the heritage, um the heritage staff who have given me a heritage report that say that the exterior of the building is historically white. It'll look very similar, but cleaner.
Yes.
I do think that the original doors are red right now, and they will be repainted to their original white.
Oh, really? Interesting. Okay, I'm going down a rabbit hole. Anyhow. Yeah, what month?
What month?
Will the exterior be, if you, like, is there a guesstimate? 'Cause I know you said phase one and I have to be a little bit shifting here, but, you know, when?
That's a great question. Actually, when is a wonderful question. We just got signed on with the Department of Enterprise Services, and so we still need to select our Energy Savings Company and meet with them to find out their professional opinion on how long the audit will take and then how long the construction scope will take. Um I was told by D E S that the investment-grade audit, which is where they come in and look at all the things and ask all the questions, takes ninety to a hundred and fifty days. So it probably won't get painted until later next year or maybe the following year, depending on what the Energy Savings Company says.
Okay, that's fair. Also, it kind of manages expectations a little bit, so, thank you. Also, happy first time presenting.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited to be here.
All right, I think we're ready to to go on to the next phase.
Wonderful, awesome. So uh along with phase one, we have a whole separate body of work, which is very exciting. Um we're working with the contractor, a hundred and ten percent to help us do a scope of work, which includes a business plan, a lease agreement, and helping us identify and select anchor partners. The anchor partners are gonna be the ones who take on long-term leases in the building. In the concept plan, the city will remain owners of the building, but we will actually be taking on long-term partnerships with organizations in town to provide the art programming throughout the building. So there's gonna be four to seven anchor partners selected. They will move in, take on long-term leases, which will be between five, ten years. We're still kind of settling on that with our contractor, and they will provide their expertise in programming through the building to create the art center itself. Um we had a meeting with arts organizations in town on April thirteenth uh where we were able to kind of learn the breadth and depth of the organization. where we were able to kind of learn the breadth and depth of the organizations here in Olympia, and we are rich with amazing people and amazing programs. We were able to create some collaborative opportunities where people who don't normally get to sit at a table together could learn and share what their missions, visions, values are and how they align and what they could possibly work on together. We shared a vision of the Armory, and we shared some selection criteria. And I'm gonna take a break to talk and show you a quick video of what they said. And it starts with me, so pardon that, I was the pilot test video person, and they put me in it. Oh, I knew how to do it, look at me. I'm gonna pause it though. Can I get help with the audio? How do I move it over? Sorry about that.
You might wanna X out of that joint free up.
Oh, thank you so much, the little advertisement.
Yeah.
Thank you, apologies. Do you want me to hit play and try again?
I don't know whether it would catch on the TV.
I'm gonna keep talking while we pause, so that I can keep the content rolling while we find out our audio. Thank you for helping me. Part of what, part of what we shared at that meeting with those people is our selection criteria for anchor partners. That was one of the first deliverables that we were able to get from 110% that helps inform the process of selecting these partners. Those are purpose, so organizational principles are aligning with the working vision statement of the Armory that's in the concept plan. Diversity aligns with the city's commitment to equity, inclusion, and belonging and collectively representing a wide range of art forms. Leadership, having clearly positioned leaders that embody their organization's purpose and the Armory's public benefit.
There's a hack for that.
For education, perhaps for regular game nights, tabletop nights. I think that games are a really excellent way to bring people together.
My vision for the Armory is to see art organizations like dance groups, theater groups, filmmakers, all to get together and make a musical.
Our vision for the Armory is that we find a rehearsal and a performance space.
My vision for the Armory is a space for artists and creatives.
And what our vision for the Armory is, we would really like space, a studio space or a meeting space in downtown Olympia.
Downtown Olympia, yeah, that'd be great.
My vision for the Armory is that it be an inclusive arts place, that it be available schedule-wise and affordable.
Coming together with other organizations to collaborate and create a community network of resources for the peers in our program.
A place where people can come, be together, enjoy art, enjoy other people.
People of different backgrounds and ages and abilities to come together with the common purpose of making art here in Olympia.
Rooms for workshops, breakout rooms to teach youth. I think their dream would also be to be, have a performance space available.
You know, this is something we deeply care about, and we'd love to be a part of the conversation.
That its architecture and its history is preserved and memorialized in the building, and.
It'll make sure that it stays local.
Have a place in Olympia to kind of share their creative vision.
And my vision for the Armory is something welcoming, something where we can have multiple events going on.
That this is a safe place for all kinds of activities.
We would love to see like a bigger, more flexible space than what we have to present in. We see it as kind of an extension of the space that we provide. We're just super excited to do whatever we can to support.
We're more than books.
Yes, we are.
And affordable space for doing choral music performance. And it seems nice with the Armory where there'd be opportunities to connect with other musical groups, too.
That we keep it Olympia-focused and support all the work that is already happening around us.
As a meeting space and potentially hosting our annual talent show that we do.
Materials, tables, extension cords, shelving, that could stage a community arts studio.
We've grown over the past few years, and it's become less and less easy to find a venue for the choir.
Cell operation.
I can't wait to just be walking by and see fun things overflowing from the building.
It will be a home for all of us in the community who want to make beautiful things happen.
I'm very excited about the Armory and for being involved in this process, thank you.
And share what they feel passionate about, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I can see quite a few faces up there.
How wonderful, I feel very lucky to be working with this group, trying to make dreams come true. So, you can see that there's a lot of heart and a lot of very excited people who wanna start using this space. And I'll be working towards making it safe, and also we'll be working towards identifying anchor partners. We had over fifty-six organizations come to that meeting, over a hundred people come. And we asked to gauge interest of who would be interested in being an anchor tenant who takes on a lease. Twenty-five of those organizations said they were interested. So we have a huge interest in the community, and it's going to be a very wonderful process to find our core anchor tenants. This is the selection criteria that we shared with those, that group of people. This is the scope, initial scoping for that anchor partner criteria. There will, of course, be other questions that we ask, like, "How much square footage do you need to be able to succeed in your mission?", and some technical questions. But this is, this is the scope that we're starting with, with 110%. Purpose, diversity, leadership, public benefit, so subject matter experts in areas of expertise and have a clear value-add to the public demographics, can clearly identify the community their organization serve, and an ability to pay rent, as that is going to be a core part of anchor tenancy. Although, I will reiterate that anchor partners will be one of many types of partnerships we'll be seeing at the Armory. So the question is, what's the next steps after having this wonderful partner meeting? We were able to meet with them again and share and invite them to future meetings on those specific spaces with the energy savings company, making sure that our art partners are communicated with regularly. The people who wanna become anchor tenants are invited to those meetings and understand the scope of what the next phase of work will look like. And then we will continue working with 110% on a scope of work. So, Mayor Sibley, to get to your question. We have hired 110% to create a operational strategy, budget, and business plan. So that's going to help inform how the structure of how we as a city pay for the Armory to continue being open and exist, what the scope of tenancy looks like, and how that, along with other funding models, will continue not only Armory being able to be available to these partners to provide successful programming, but also to do future steps of development so that it can continue morphing into the ultimate dream vision, or just flexibly change in case the dream vision morphs over time as new people come in and have fresh ideas, and we wanna make space for them. So next steps, we'll be identifying models and best practices in regards to long-term partnerships. Farrell Bueller of 110% and I are working together on the model of what a lease agreement would look like, but also within the scope of what the Friends of the Armory or the Armory Partner Collaborative Consortium would look like. What are we agreeing to? What are our common values? What are we working towards together as a partnership? We will also be creating essential documents this summer and fall. We, before we release an RFQ for partner selection, we wanna have the lease agreement created in order for them to make an informed decision about whether it's something they would like to sign on for, along with a full scope of the selection process available. And then they will also be providing a financial business strategy that will be our guiding star as we move towards, through construction, towards grand opening and to opening as an art center. And with that, I'll just put my thank you screen and my contact information. I am very available, and I'm happy to chat and talk or answer any additional questions, so please come, come say hi. Or email me, or anything you'd like. And with that, I will happily answer questions on any of what I've presented.
Nice, nicely done. Yes, I mean, you got through, that's a big scope of work, and it's to go with the big building. So, I'll start with a quick question. So, just you are gonna do all of it? Like, it's just you?
I have a really amazing powerhouse team. I work with Stephanie Johnson, Angel Nava, and Adam Parton, and Stephanie's here. And then we also have the benefit and passion and will of all of the Parks Arts and Recreation Team, and then the city staff. I feel like I have entered into a really wonderfully integrated network of helpful people. In addition to that, we're trying to be a small but mighty team that uses our brains and leverages the passions and interests of others. So we're excited to work with Department of Enterprise Services and the energy savings company to do that as well. But yeah, I'll be the project manager, I'm the building person.
Okay.
That's me, yeah.
We have an amazing, you know, Parks Department, of course, so glad you're feeling supported.
I do feel supported, yes, I'm very excited about this project.
Lovely, okay. Anyone down here gonna go with Councilmember Madron? Got everybody, so we're just gonna come down the stairs. This may be a phase featured down the road, but last time we heard about the Armory in council chambers, I noted that it looks like there's some community gardens in the outside space. And so maybe this is post-anchor-tenant conversation, but just wanted to put that plug in there, since you weren't here and we talked about it before, thinking about who our partner is for the outside of the building and how that, those spaces will be tended and who can help support that.
Yeah, definitely, thank you for that. I know that in the concept plan, there was a mention of a community garden or a community-centered hub space where people can kind of experiment on the lawn. I am interested to see if any of the anchor, people who propose anchor tenancy would wanna take that on. That would be one way to go about it, otherwise I think there's future, there's definitely future questions of, does anybody want to do something like that?
Well, and just so you're aware, we're currently working with the Thurston Conservation District. We have a contract with them to establish new community gardens in Olympia, so, you know, there might be some intersection to happen here. And there's also a kitchen in that building to make some very, very beautiful dishes, the culinary arts.
Yes, that's awesome. The kitchen is in Phase One currently. It's listed as a kitchen upgrade to make it accessible and usable, so that's, yes, absolutely.
Awesome, Councilmember Payne?
Hi Valerie, welcome.
Thank you.
My first question is about the requirement for the ability to pay rent for, in the space. So, will there be, will there be subleasing for those who may not be able to, you know, rent the space? Because we're, we're also thinking about access and who has access to this space as well. And there may be some smaller entities in our community that may, that will automatically be excluded because of that requirement, so I'm just thinking about that.
Yeah, thank you for that, that's something that's on my mind a lot. I don't have an answer of exactly how it's gonna work out. It's part of the questions, though, that I'm asking when it comes to developing this lease agreement, and also what we're looking for in our partners. I'm not sure if there's gonna be availability to sublease, but I do know that one of the priorities I have for anchor tenancy is collaboration. I've started meeting in person with some of the people who came to that meeting just so I can get to know community members who would be involved in this project. And so many of them, like, "Who are you meeting with? 'Cause I work with these eight other organizations to provide space and access and collaborate and lift up." And I think that's something that Olympia does really well, and I think it's something that we wanna make sure that we're encouraging. I do wanna make sure that the space remains accessible for as many people, organizations as possible, even within the scope of having anchor tenants in the building. There will be some spaces that are also reserved and managed by the City of Olympia that will be available for short-term rentals. So people who wanna host events in the drill hall, people who wanna have art markets for the weekend, that will still be within the scope of the plan and available. Something that I'm looking towards, that we've been talking about as a team, is how are we reducing barriers to cost when it comes to renting spaces like that, so that it's accessible? I'm coming from the museum world where there's either pay-as-you-go models or there's a nonprofit organization who's willing to have grant scholarships to cover costs of rentals, things like that, that we can fold in and build up over time. So those are types of things that we would probably explore, although those are all things that are in an iterative phase. We're kinda talking through what possibilities there are.
What is a reality right now is we have Inspire Olympia starting next year. And so, all of these nonprofits will be able to write grants for rent.
Yes, and that works at the Armory.
Yeah, that was actually the point I was getting ready to make next. But, thank you. And then, but my second question is more of on a personal one. You have a very impressive background in national and state parks and working with museums, so how did we find you, or how did you find us?
That's a really good question. I was working with Washington State Parks as their statewide partnership manager. And actually, it's funny how I found this job. I was, a friend of mine wanted to move to Olympia and asked me to help her look for jobs, and this one popped up, and I was like, "Oh, I can't resist." This is everything I've ever done, and I love it so much, and I had to apply.
Oh, love that story. Mayor Protem Gilman?
So, I've noticed that in the presentations from the beginning of this process, that the image we've used of the Armory has been the night that Dave Sederberg lit it, and not a historic photo of a white building with white doors. And I'm wondering, is it, is it a law? Is it a historic register kind of requirement? 'Cause it's, you know.
White doors?
That's a really good question. It is, so the Historic Structures Report that we were issued, the most historically significant part of the building is the exterior face design. And so we'll wanna be as close to that as possible moving forward. It is on the Historic Register, and we're gonna pursue it being registered as a historic building in more places, so we wanna make sure that we're really investing in that and honoring the building as part of its heritage. Although, I think we should light it up as much as possible, I think that.
That would be a specific request, then, would be in selecting the exterior paint?
Yeah.
To collect, to select a paint that works particularly well as a screen?
Yes, that's a good point, yes.
Absolutely, I think external projections are in our future, it looks super good.
It does.
As a canvas. Yes, yes.
Alright, next up, Councilmember Partially?
I think you're gonna hear from all of us. You've done excellent, and welcome to the city. I should've said that in the first time I asked you questions. I have two questions. The first is, and I'm assuming your business plan is going to provide this, the number of partnerships you expect for the future to be able to keep this place full and functioning will probably be developed during the business plan portion of it?
Yes, yeah, I think it'll be informed by the business plan. It'll also be informed by the request for qualifications process when we select the partners, depending on what those partners specifically are asking for square footage needs. You know, if we can get more of them in there, like, if somebody's asking for an office space, that's, we might be able to have more people in there as opposed to four big organizations asking for four chunks of the building. So, it really, it's gonna be informed by the community saying what they would like to do in the building that will inform how many anchor partners we start with. And then also, we can kind of look for what the community's asked us to provide through there, get, see our initial anchor tenants and see what else is possible to fit in the building. Fifty thousand square feet gets really small when you start thinking of the scope of what people wanna do in there, it's gonna be really fun to puzzle people in.
Immediately, and then you're gonna be like, "Oh, let's use that accessory building in the back." So, you know, just a fun thing, we should turn our kitchen into an example kitchen for the new air technology that's replacing gas stoves. 'Cause there's a gas stove in there, and I read an article in New York Times that said some of the top chefs prefer these new air stoves. And see if we can get somebody to use it as a demonstration kitchen for this area, because then we can get rid of natural gas out of that building. As you can, I'm a broken record with the. And you can, I'm a broken record with the climate. And the last thing is, I know I brought it up to the mayor and the mayor Protem and the city manager, but this building, God forbid, we have a natural disaster, could be a shelter. We could apply to FEMA brick grants and use that to fund some of the construction and repair and earthquake upgrades and all that stuff. I know, I hate it when mine does that too.
Sorry.
No, 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 mine was doing that in the middle of the meeting. I had to turn that off. So I'm assuming that got to you.
It did, yes. Thank you so much. We explored the brick grant and I actually met with Pamela Baraf to discuss it. And I think that we're going to fold the Armory into a larger scope assessment in the future. I'm not sure, she said she was working on it and I was like, okay, I'll join in when you're ready.
It's a team of collaboratives, right?
Yes, yes. It is something that we're interested in investigating. And the one thing that we can do to add to that conversation as we kind of make decisions on how we want to work as a united group towards these efforts is part of Phase One will include a seismic study. And what we can do is specifically ask, what qualifications do we need to meet? And what would it look like to improve it to that level in order for this building to be considered a shelter? And that's the first question that we can at least ask when we're doing all of these studies anyway. So that'll be a good step.
Well, thank you for coming. I'll just end with this. This Armory project is really exciting and been in the works for a while. And I think it could be a shining example of not only Olympia arts and our arts community, but also how we can take an older historic building and make it 2020s in terms of our climate work and our social justice and equity work. It can be like the pin in our puzzle. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and thank you Valerie, and welcome to Olympia. It's a big project, but it feels like you're the right person right now for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
When folks were talking earlier, I was wondering about, it was sort of out there in left field, but like, can we host the battery for the neighborhood on the property, right? Like, the Tenino and Bakota batteries that are being worked on are like three-day, multi-block sized facilities that would be pretty amazing. At least a partnership with the headquarters of, or, sorry, with Avante High School across the street to see how we can play off of energy in that close proximity. I would not be surprised if there's heating and power opportunities between two really old facilities in that conversation. So a storage battery, like, just like you would have for a house, which is becoming a little bit more common now for people who have solar. So a place to store solar power so the excess can be kept on-site and not released back out into the grid. So that's just kind of an out there. But the real thing that I want to bring up, and I brought this up in the lodging tax conversation in finance, so it'll be a little bit repetitive for a couple of folks. But in 2020, after George Floyd's murder, my organization that I work for is an international organization with 1,200 chapters. They drew a line in the sand and they said that if you're going to be part of our organization, that you need to have a public-facing declaration of your commitment to equity and anti-racist values, that your board and your staff need to be trained annually in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that you have to consider equity in how you fund and make grants. And I would like to see the city get to that point where everyone we contract with, everyone that has a lease with the city declares a commitment to equity and anti-racism values, that they will train their board and staff regularly in diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging, and that they will publicly declare that they will prioritize historically underserved and under-advantaged populations. And in, you know, in finance, I was told that it will take time to get our nonprofits there and that we need to teach people and they need to learn. And I think that's an okay answer, but I don't think it's the right answer. And it's been bugging me. And so this is the same conversation and I think it's a citywide conversation that we need to figure out. Because actually, the nonprofits in Olympia were talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion five years at least before the death of George Floyd as a group. They were learning, they were training, they were teaching. They had boards talking about the right representation and who should be at the table. And I think that we've dusted off our values since 2020 and restated a whole bunch of them. And I think the only way that we can walk the walk is by making everyone that gets a dollar from the city walk the same walk. And so I just want to put that out there. I know that's a lot and I know that's probably not all the way where you'll get when you do an RFP and a lease agreement. But I hope that those three things can become just core to how we do business in the future in the city. And this is my new squeaky wheel thing, so.
Thank you.
You know, can I follow up really quick to that conversation? So I think what would help organizations is if we made what we, what our training is for our, for our staff, offer maybe yearly training that's free for them. Because a lot of times, it's capacity for them to hire their own consultant to go through their board training.
I think that's a great idea. Like, anything we can do to help continue that conversation, but also, it's not our job. They should be coming to us already in the right space.
That's aspirational and a lot of these nonprofit boards don't know where to start, especially the small.
A lot of them are there.
Small ones. But anyhow, noted. Councilmember Wen.
Yeah, I love talking about this. And, and there is no easy solution that will be found tonight in our time together. So for any councilmates that would like to join me on, you know, a venture of talking more about this and striking what that right middle ground is. Because I agree, there are some, you know, we're focused on nonprofits right now, but some nonprofits that have been years ahead of the game. And also, 2020 was such an important moment in time and a time that shocked us into, many of us, not all of us, into acting now and acting more authentically. And, and I would say that we don't necessarily have it right yet. So I want to extend that same grace to small and large organizations out there. And I, and I like, you know, already where this conversation is going. A keen passion and then a really thoughtful way of, you know, well, how do we get our partners on board, right? And in a way that's thoughtful. And then also respect that, that means equity means something different to everyone in our community. And so anyways, so, et cetera. Anyway, let's keep going.
All right, are we ready for round two down the dais or have we got more questions? Are we all good? All right. Well, thank you. And you said next steps, timeline-wise are?
Next steps, I'm working this summer and early fall with 110% on those deliverables, the business plan, the operations strategy. So hopefully, I will have approved content that has been, you know, viewed and reviewed by many intelligent brains to bring forward this fall or maybe early winter is the goal. We just signed our contract with DES. We're going to be selecting the ESCO. So hopefully, we'll be moving forward with that full-scale audit this fall as well, given this timelines of all the other work that they're doing. I'm not sure what the scope of that look like. But I'll have an update on timelines when we have them on board and they can inform that process as well.
Excellent. So I'm sure you have in the back of your mind that the timing for the solicitation of grant proposals for Inspire Olympia. Because that's going to go out, I believe, before the end of the year. So to have the partners selected if possible by then would be really nice.
Oh, yes. My goal is to have the partners selected by early next year, hopefully, so that they can have time to prepare. But hopefully, it'll be in time with the Inspire Olympia grant before the deadline.
Yeah, if you could, you know, talk to Mary Grace about that timing. Because it would be, I think, crucial for these partners to have access to those grant dollars to help them through their first few years, for sure.
Definitely. Thank you for that, absolutely. Thank you so much. It was nice to meet you all.
All right, every, have a good evening. Excellent. All right, so we're on to council member reports. All I have is mayor tonight is that we have, the next two weeks, we do not have business meetings. So you, if you're looking to make comments or reach out to us, you're going to have to do that by email because we will not have public comment the next two Tuesdays. Because we won't be meeting. Our regular committees will be meeting though. And then our next regular scheduled business meeting is August 8th. All right, with that, I'll go to my right.
Councilmember report.
All right, Councilmember Payne.
So just one item. Last week, I had a special meeting, again, with the South Sound Military Communities Partnership. And we discussed a, essentially that there is no easily accessible one-stop shop for the resources that are needed to support service members, veterans, and their families. And so we've been working with an organization, Operation Red Dot, as well as Base Hubs and 211 to figure out a way to try to consolidate that and make it much easier for people. And so another point that I wanted to mention is, I'm not sure who we use in terms on staff of figuring out data as it relates to these populations. So how many folks we have within our city limits that are specifically veterans or service members, things of that nature. And their program manager at this organization has the ability to help us should we need that information. So we can call upon them if needed.
Good to know. I'm sure Mike Reed would be interested in making a contact there. All right, Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Last week, Inner City Transit held a day-long retreat to kind of talk about going vision to reality in terms of zero emissions buses. That it's great to have visions and plans and encourage community collaborations, but what if you actually were going to try to shift to either battery-electric or hydrogen fuel cell for your fleet? And so we had a couple of sets of consultants come in, and Puget Sound Energy. And the first thing was sort of a double sticker shock, that it's a couple hundred million dollars right now, either one of those technologies to make the transition, and that it would require six megawatts of power to run the fixed route buses in town, which is about two and a half of those big wind turbines as you're going over the mountains. It's that, and so that's, I think, some good perspective as we talk about wanting more EV vehicles generally, talk about wanting more charging stations, is that Puget Sound Energy was explaining that this could be double or two and a half times the current residential load that they serve if people are doing their transportation through electricity. And there's not that kind of excess capacity today. So it would mean some combination of community solar and wind, rooftop installations that are privately owned. And they would argue that it would still require natural gas peaker plants to, anyhow, it's a big, it's a big load. So we have to think about, if we're going to electrify transportation, how would we get double the power that is currently being delivered through the wires, the substations, as well as the generating capacity? So that was, that was a fascinating conversation to me. And then the other perspective thing was, even though there's a lot of miles, about a million miles a year run by Inner City Transit, it's half of 1% of the emission, transportation emissions by the study that TRPC did for us. And, and they run at about the same passenger, passenger mile per gallon equivalent as the average cars in town. So they're not less fuel efficient than cars. And so the question, you know, as, as sort of a social service agency, would you prioritize this conversion because it might help lead the community or be a model, anyhow? So it was, it was interesting to dig into the, sort of the sticky reality. And then I'll just, the last thing is that really, all of this, if we were to make a rapid transition, it would be because there was Federal Transportation Administration support to, to more rapidly adopt one of those two technologies. And we're seeing plenty of systems that are doing a couple of buses as a demonstration. But there's federal funding coming down the road now to choose a few systems and have them actually make a transition to zero emissions. So, and one other cool thing I didn't even know was that, so the, the R99 renewable diesel, which is essentially the, the most modern refined version of biodiesel, it's non-oil, non-petroleum diesel fuel. The state contract has fuels from a couple of suppliers. And as of February, the diesel buses for Inner City are running on that R99. And we're paying a premium for it, but we're running on vegetable oil-based fuels. So it's pretty cool.
I could make an air fryer joke, but I won't. All right, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Mayor Protem, I'm just curious, as big of a customer as that would make, Inner City Transit, do you have a third-party analysis of that grid capacity or are you going off what the power company tells you?
In, in the current world that we're in, there's a single provider of electricity. And there's, there's a couple of providers of hydrogen, but there's not a, you know, there's not an alternative. So, so one of the conversations was about whether local transit agencies together or the transit agency with other local institutions could be a big enough demand to create an organization like a public utility district, to essentially be a PUD and buy directly from Bonneville where they're wheeling power. But again, that power is currently all being used somewhere and spoken for. So anywhere we go, folks are going to blink kind of hard. I was wondering if we could sign up for maybe five megawatts more, you know?
Right.
That's a big increase.
Councilmember Partially.
I have nothing to report because law didn't meet this month. And I know you're disappointed. I know you're disappointed. So I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen.
If you say law one more time. Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Nothing to report, just to remind the council and staff that I will be out of pocket and off the grid for the month of August. So apologize and appreciate you excusing me.
Yeah, absolutely. Have fun and be safe. So at this time, we are going to recess and ask, I'm going to ask the council to reconvene in five minutes for an executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 regarding litigation, potential litigation. No decisions will be made. The meeting is expected to last no more than 90 minutes. There's a warning, 90 minutes, yeah. Up to 90. Anyhow, so we will, at the conclusion of our executive session, we'll be adjourned for the evening. Thank you.